...the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Major event tonight? If the treasurer is ready, we will...
She's just getting the old book.
Getting the old book?
The old book, yes.
Okay, we'll have the swearing-in person.
Swearing in, swearing in.
Well, swearing in comes later.
Right.
I know that one.
I'll be looking for it.
Five, two.
Okay, the State of New York, County of Clinton, Village of Champlain, I, Kim Trombley, here's your hand, I do, I, Kim Trombley, just solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee for a two-year term, April 1st, 2013 to April 6th, 2015. Thanks, ma'am. What's that? I know, I'm covering. Here's your hand, the State of New York, County of Clinton, Village of Champlain, I, Janet McFetrich, just solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee for a two-year term, April 1st, 2013 to April 6th, 2015. I solemnly swear. Yep. Thank you. The State of New York, County of Clinton, Village of Champlain, I, Gregory Martin, just solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, that I will faithfully discharge the duties of mayor for a two-year term, April 1st, 2013 to April 6th, 2015, according to the best of my ability.
I will.
Don't finger crossing.
We'll take vaccine there. Okay, vaccine. Okay, clerk, take a roll call members, please.
Um, trustee Trombley.
Yeah.
Trustee McFetrich.
Yeah.
Trustee Trombley.
Here.
Trustee Garrett.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
Garrett. Okay, we're going into the organizational meeting now. Buckle your seatbelts. Start with the mayor's appointment. David Marshall, hereby appointed village attorney, term one year, expiring April 7th, 2014, at the retaining and settling annual budget appropriation. Donna Barkum, B, and is hereby appointed deputy clerk for a term of one year, expiring April 7th, 2014, salary set annual budget appropriation. Michael Tollaker, B, and is hereby appointed superintendent of public works for a period of one year, expiring April 7th, 2014, at a salary set by annual budget appropriation. Michael Tator Jr., B, and hereby appointed fire, billing codes, and enforcement, zoning enforcement officer, for a term of one year, expiring April 7th, 2014, at a salary set by annual budget appropriation. One each of you knows, B, and is hereby appointed record access manager for one year, for a one-year term, expiring April 7th, 2014, at no salary. Donna Barkum, B, and is hereby appointed registrar of vital statistics for a term of one year, expiring April 7th, 2014, at a salary set by annual budget appropriation. We have a vacancy, two vacancies actually on the planning board, if anyone is interested in serving, please call the village office and let us know, we would gladly like your participation. In fact, we have one, two, we have three vacancies. Robert Luckett, B, and is hereby appointed to the planning board for a term of five years, expiring April 2nd, 2018, at no salary. Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favors, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Major all committee appointments, resignations, April 1st, 2013 to April 7th, 2014. Following appointments were offered by Mayor Martin, Deputy Mayor Amy Garrett, Water and Sewer Commissioner Tom Trombley, Deputy Commissioner Kim Trombley, Street Commissioner Kim Trombley, Deputy Commissioner Janet McFetrich, Equipment Tool Commissioner Amy Garrett, Deputy Commissioner Janet McFetrich, Building Property Commissioner Kim Trombley, Deputy Commissioner Amy Garrett, Parks Recreation Commissioner Amy Garrett, Deputy Commissioner Janet McFetrich, Personnel Commissioner Amy Garrett, Deputy Commissioner Kim Trombley, Arrestment Committee Member Kim Trombley, and Janet McFetrich, Shared Services Commissioner Tom Trombley, Deputy Commissioner Kim Trombley, Insurance Commissioner Amy Garrett, Planning Board Liaison Tom Trombley, Zoning Board Liaison Janet McFetrich, Champlain Fire District Liaison Greg Martin, Chairperson of the Zoning Board of Appeals Clark Curtick, we need to appoint a vice chairperson. Chairperson of the planning board at the moment is vacant, we will appoint someone to that position as soon as we discuss this with the members. Budget Officer Greg Martin, Recreation Committee Amy Garrett, Town of Champlain IDA member Gregory Martin, Town of Champlain IDA member Thomas Trombley. Not for very long, a lot, Thomas.
That's true.
That's true. We're almost, the last meeting was today, I think. Okay, any motion to approve?
Make motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Board appointments, Marie Doopy, Clerk Clark, Florence Carden, B, and are hereby appointed inspectors of election for a term of one year, expiring April 7th, 2014, at the salary set by annual budget appropriation with Marie Doopy as chairperson. We have a vacancy in the village historian, Michelle Grennan, B, and is hereby appointed recreation leader for a term of one year, expiring April 7th, 2014, at a salary set by annual budget appropriation. Stephen Meyer, B, and is hereby appointed to the zoning board of appeals for a term of five years, expiring April 2nd, 2018, at no salary. Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Want me to continue?
Mr. Martin, you want me to read some?
No, I'll read it, it's an hour, you don't feel well, so. All right. Monday night of each month, B, and is hereby designated as the official, the second Monday of every month, each month is hereby designated as the official meeting night of the village board during the year April 1st, 2013 through April 7th, 2014, and the time is at 6:30 PM at the village office, 1104 Route 9, Main Street, Champlain, New York. Further, a copy of said resolution be forwarded to the news media and others having an interest in said meetings and requesting copies there, thereof, thereby officially notifying the public as required by law and in meetings the obligation of the Freedom of Information Act. Also, that said meeting dates be posted in one conspicuous place in the village as required by law. Have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The second Wednesday night of each month, B, and is hereby designated as the official meeting night of the zoning board of appeals during the year April 1st, 2013 through April 7th, 2014, and the time be at 5:00 PM at the village office, 1104 Route 9, Main Street, Champlain, New York. Further, a copy of said resolution be forwarded to the news media and others having an interest in said meetings and requesting copies thereof, thereby officially notifying the public as required by law and in meeting the obligations of the Freedom of Information Act. Also, that said meeting dates be posted in one conspicuous place in the village as required by law. Have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The third Wednesday night of each month, B, and is hereby designated as the official meeting night of the planning board during the year April 1st, 2013 through April 7th, 2014, and the time be at 5:00 PM at the village office, 1104 Route 9, Main Street, Champlain, New York. Further, a copy of said resolution be forwarded to the news media and others having an interest in said meetings and requesting copies thereof, thereby officially notifying the public as required by law and in the meeting of the obligations of the Freedom of Information Act. Also, that said meeting dates be posted in one conspicuous place in the village as required by law. Have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion here? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That TD Bank, Chezy Grant Branch Office, Key Bank of New York, N.A., Champlain Branch Office, Chase Manhattan Bank, New York, New York, Key Trust Company, Albany, New York, USDA Rural Development, Ithaca, New York, and Champlain National Bank. Champlain Branch Office, B, are hereby designated the official bank depositories of village funds during the year April 1st, 2013 through April 7th, 2014.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Champlain has determined to authorize payment in advance of audit of claims for public utility services, postage, freight, and express charges, and whereas all such claims shall be presented at the next regular board meeting of audit, and whereas the claimant and officer incurring or approving the same shall be jointly and severely liable for any amount disallowed by the Board of Trustees. Now, therefore, be it resolved, section one, that the Board of Trustees authorizes payment in advance of audit of claims for public utility services, postage, freight, and express charges, and all such claims shall be presented at the next regular board meeting for audit, and the claimant and officer incurring or approving the same shall be jointly and severely liable for any amount disallowed by the Board of Trustees. This resolution takes effect immediately. Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Champlain has determined to pay a fixed rate for mileage as reimbursement to officers and employees of the village who use their personal automobiles while performing their official duties on behalf of the village. Now, therefore, be it resolved, section one, that the Board of Trustees shall approve reimbursement of such officers and employees at the rate of 50 cents per mile. Section two, this resolution shall take effect immediately. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Article F, that the Press Republican, last spring in New York, B, and is hereby designated the official newspaper of the Village of Champlain during the year April 1st, 2013 through April 7th, 2014.
So moved.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. That the village continues participation in and with the joint projects of the Town of Champlain Youth Program and with the County of Clinton Comprehensive Youth Program as a member of said countywide youth organization. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. That the annual organization meeting for organizing the board for the 2014-2015 official year and for the various appointments and committees, B, and is hereby scheduled for April 7th, 2014, at 6:30 PM at the village office, 1104 Route 9, Main Street, Champlain, New York. Motion to accept?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Excuse me, motion carries. The board next reviewed investment policy, procurement policy, Teamsters Union contract, personnel policy, rules and proceeds for public meetings, procedures, excuse me, for public meetings, and they were all accepted as submitted. May I put a stop here? I would like two trustees to volunteer to review the personnel policy for changes and to bring that back for approval and discussion at the next board meeting.
Will I volunteer?
Okay, I have one, do I have another?
Um, I'll do it.
Okay. Kim and Amy, thank you, we can put that one on hold. All right.
Uh, you need to have a motion to close the public, the annual meeting.
Okay.
That's the last thing.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Need a motion to go back to regular meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, need a motion to approve the minutes previous meeting, February 11th, 2013.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? You approve, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Presentation of petitions, communications, and notices, general question period for members of the community.
Did I hear you mention that there's a new member of the zoning board of appeals? Or did I miss, understand what you said?
No.
Okay. You made an appointment to the zoning board then?
Steven Meyer.
Steven Meyer.
Just reappointing him.
Just reappointing.
Okay, I misunderstood.
Yeah. Has a report from Mr. Pedro?
March is a short month, I did my annual training, gone for weeks, take care of all that, now my credits got recertified, so I'm good to go for another year. Other than that, a few different people, a few different issues, trying to line up, inspections I need to do with some of these bigger places around the village, get them into compliance, if there are any issues, basically.
What's happening at the main knitting place? They're emptying it out.
Well, I don't know that they're emptying it out, the water meter for that fire pond has not moved since 2009, and I'm trying to find documentation of how much water's supposed to be in there. And, I mean, I went by there today and checked it out, and to me, it doesn't seem like there's enough water there to put out a garbage fire, never mind put a fire out that building. And there's low flows on that pocket drive, so that was the whole purpose of the fire pond, so I'm trying to find, you know, the paperwork for when phase one went in, but it's truly quite a task here.
I was referring to the old main knitting downtown. The old fire, titanium mirror.
What's going on with it?
Yeah, there was a lot of action going on this past week, two weeks ago.
Emptying it out.
Trucks backed up. They're putting it up for sale.
The dumpster was, dumpster was up there.
I went by there, I didn't see the dumpster, nothing worked out of there, so.
Dumpster was there, it was loaded with garbage, trimming, stuff like that.
Oh.
And they took that out, and then shortly thereafter, Kevin, I put a sign up for sale.
Oh.
Maybe we should call Mr. Buck up, or pay him, and see what's going on.
Other than that, getting ready to send out a mass mailing of what I perceive are violations in the village, junk debris, and sprinkling type of stuff, you know? If we wait till May, it's July, August.
Right.
You never get caught up, so this year I want to start in April, and see if we can head some of this stuff off.
Any other questions for me?
And what, how are we going to proceed this summer with the lawn mowing? Are we going to have the staff mow instead of waiting until it's too deep again and get these properties mowed once and have the people suffer all summer long? Because I'd really like to establish a rule now so we don't have that problem.
We have a list of, I think we have a list of previous violators.
Right, and nothing's changed from their status.
You know, maybe we could write them a letter early, requesting that they pay more attention to their lines. I'm afraid legally they have to be contracted out, or the, the village will, I don't think the village should have to mow these grasses.
I mean, to do it.
Contract them out and then add them onto their taxes and due.
To do it legally, I have to send them a letter, I have to wait 30 days for a response. Well, if the grass grows for 30 days, you're never going to hear from them, because a lot of these are bank-owned or.
So how do we change that, is my question? Now, before the grass starts growing, how do we change that? Because really, you get one cutting only with this silly law and rule, and it's not fair to the people who are paying their taxes and living next to these cesspool properties. So what do we do to correct that, is my question to you?
Write a letter early?
Yeah, I mean, we could do the letters now, because by the 15th of May, we're going to be cutting grass here, you know, it's the nature of the beast. You know, over a year in the past, we write letters, but by then, the grass is a foot tall, and you need a brush on it there.
Well, I'm sure we have a list of common violators here somewheres.
Yeah, oh yeah.
So if we can, if we can get a letter sent out to them soon, saying like, the next mowing season is upon us, we've had troubles in the past, can you pay closer attention to the lawn mowing, et cetera? And then we can use up that 30-day period.
Yeah, basically, we'd have to let them know that we're going to contract it out once it reaches the six-inch limit.
Yes.
We're not going to wait for a response from them, which is probably never going to come.
Well, that's one of the interesting things that we voted on last time, last month, was to get the assembly, get the federal government to force the banks to let the municipalities know who owns those properties, who's in charge of those properties.
Exactly, right.
So now we have, I remember, I spent one day, one afternoon on the phone with Bank of America on one piece of property, going from Washington to California to New York, back to Washington State, I mean, it was just.
It's a game they all play, because they don't want to be responsible, they figure they're going to give up.
Well, it's a nuisance.
So if we send out this letter ahead of time, we can.
Now stating, once it hits X inches, we will be mowing.
Right.
Repeatedly, throughout the season.
Exactly.
Okay. So state it in that way, then we can keep up on it, might can find someone who's going to be willing to do this. And people will be thrilled to hear that, because there are a few people that have been really stuck for several years now, for a summer.
So here we come.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Anything else for Michael?
Anything going on with the property on Oak Street and then the other property on Cedar Street?
The Stone House on Oak Street. I talked to him earlier in February, and he's supposed to have that down by May.
I noticed today, I looked at the back of the building, it's down, I don't know if it fell down or.
No, no, he took it down. He took it down, then winter came, and it got cold, and his tractor doesn't start, his this and his that, and I told him, if it's not down by May, I'm going to go for a legal.
May 1st or May 31st?
I think I said the 15th in the letter.
Okay.
Cedar Street, I believe he sent the letter.
Yeah, the board was talking with that.
Yeah, it's up to you to decide whether you want to accept that, those terms, or whatever you want.
What was the discussion you had with him? Did he just randomly throw out the end of August? Except it was very far out.
No, he had sent a letter back to a letter I had sent, and in it, he stated that he was going to demolish it, but he never set a timeline.
Okay.
So I sent him another letter, and he didn't respond to it, so I went to see him.
Okay.
And, I mean, I'm just trying to diffuse a legal case here.
Right, and that's what we want, right.
And, you know, I'll let him pick the time, I says, if you said August, I'll bring it back to the board, and, you know.
He told me that he was extremely busy studying to pass his New York State bar exam.
Right, totally the same thing.
And that's supposed to be coming up here soon, and then he will address the issue upstairs, to cover that.
Okay.
He realizes it's got to be torn down, it can't be salvaged, so I thought that was a step in the right direction.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, now, got to make sure he follows through, if he doesn't, well, it won't be the first one.
Do, do we have, um, do we want to set a timeline as to July, that we haven't seen any movement of anything, that we sort of give a gentle reminder, gentle nudge?
Well, he said he wasn't tearing it down till August.
He indicated to be that his bar exam is in July, so I would say that he's probably not going to, that's not going to be his priority until after his test.
Well, you can always reply to him, saying that we expect to see some positive movement by the 15th of August.
Right. I just feel that if we don't have something stating that there has to be something moving by a particular date, it's going to be Labor Day, and it's going to be, the cold weather's coming, and it's winter, and then it's spring again.
I do agree with his input.
I'd like to see that cleaned up by Labor Day.
I would too, and that's why I just feel if we let it, if we don't set some kind of a deadline, that nothing's going to happen.
I did want to comment also on the property on Moore Street, I'm trying to get a physical address where this person lives, to have him served. Trustee issue, I sort of want to speak with Mr. Marshall, because someone told me that if it's owned by trustees, you could serve the trustees also, and they would be responsible for it, because right now, this guy has multiple addresses, and he's in and out of the state, and it's hard to find. If I can't get him served, I can't do anything legally to get him to court. So, and I'm going at it from a zoning standpoint, if the trailer is not allowed there, it's exceeded the time limit, whatever went on with the insurance company, we haven't heard anything, he hasn't filed anything as far as I know, so I'm going to try a different approach here, try to get him to local court, see what happens.
And the original owner's back in the area?
He comes and he goes, he's living in Chezy, he's got a few more different addresses. Last I heard, he was back down in North Carolina, but then someone told me, well, it's owned by trustees also, you can get them served, so I need to, I need to find out if that's true or not.
Anything else for Michael? Thing else for Michael? I need a motion to go out of the regular meeting.
So moved.
And second?
Second.
All in favor? I, the opposition. Need a motion to open a public hearing.
So moved.
On the 2013, 2014 annual budget. We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify to say aye. Aye, the opposition. Public hearing for the budget is now open.
Make a motion to accept the 2012, 2013 budget?
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Now, we need to, any discussion here on the budget? You have an updated copy. That was in the mailbox this afternoon. Amy and I met up Friday, went through it, discussed it. We have not changed, we have not changed any of the bottom lines here for general water and wastewater. The tax rate will go down, three eight two, three eighty-eight, which is a thirty-eight cent, thirty-two cent drop in property taxes for this year. I would dare say that we will be in the same set of circumstances as we were last year, with less than one percent of the total taxing agencies in New York State able to decrease their tax rate. Any other discussion on the budget?
No, I'm just checking, I believe I went over it with Juanita at the beginning of the meeting, I think everything I got tweeted, the stuff I had questioned, just to verify.
Well, we increased the sidewalk funds.
I saw that.
Mike, you're going to be busy.
Yep, maybe I'll.
Starting now. Now waiting for the budget. Use up this year's.
As soon as we can approve your shovels and stuff.
Yes.
Yep, I'll be coming up.
I'll be your best friend on the streets, too.
All right, any other discussion? Passing the letter. General call, please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee McFedgey.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley. Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Anything else on the budget, gang? All right. Would the public like to speak on the budget?
Not this time.
Well, thank you.
We can add the dishes back.
Okay. Any motion to come out of public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion there? All in favor signify to saying aye. Aye. The opposition? Need a motion to go back to the regular meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify to saying aye. Aye. The opposition? Go back to regular meeting. I would like to welcome our newest trustee, Janet McFedgey, to the village board. I wish you well, and hope that your tenure on the board will be a long one, with all you have to offer for the future of the village of Champlain. I would also like to congratulate Kim Trombley on her reelection to the board. Your years of board experience has helped greatly in keeping the village moving forward into the future. My biggest thanks goes out to the voters of the village, a large turnout is always greatly appreciated and shows a concern about the future of the village of Champlain. Your faith in this most responsive form of government is not lost on this board, who will continue to work hard to improve this village for all of its residents. With spring's arrival, the superintendent of public works will in his report announce dates for picking up raking debris, small branches. We will soon begin repairing any damage caused by street and sidewalk plowing, as well as sweeping the streets to remove sand accumulated over the past winter. I would like to thank Mike and his DPW crew for taking very good care of the streets and sidewalks this past winter. The positive responses received from our residents showed their appreciation for a job well done. Thank you, Michael. A couple words on the budget. The 2013, 2014 budget will continue the board's efforts to control spending while still moving in a forward direction. With street reconstruction and paving, starting the construction of a new playground in the village center, continuing the success of the village garden, and maintaining the services our residents depend upon and deserve, this budget will address the concerns with careful monitoring and spending. Spending wisely with the taxpayer's money. Compared to many municipalities in our area, the village finances are in very good standing. We are working very hard to pay off our debts early, saving the taxpayers' money with reduced interest, and maintaining our infrastructure to keep the village running smoothly and efficiently. This is the second year in a row the village has been able to reduce property taxes. This year, thirty-two cents per thousand reduction to three dollars and eighty-eight cents per thousand assessment. The board has been able to keep water and wastewater rates steady for the fifth year in a row for our users. This is a good budget that controls spending while still providing for the needs of our residents, the taxpayer. Thank you. Trustee Trombley.
I would also like to congratulate Janet for her election to the village board. It's a good group of board members, and we have an outstanding mayor to work with. Greg, also, congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
Also, I'd like to thank Mayor Martin for his many hours of work on the budget. He makes it extremely easy for the rest of us on this board with the hours that he puts in.
Remember how painful it was in the past?
Yes, I do, and I for one greatly appreciate the time that you put in and and with Juanita and Donna. And looking forward to working with Mike on the streets, and Mike, it won't be long, you and I will be sitting down to look at some of the streets and the sidewalks. Hopefully, putting the plows away soon and moving on to spring cleanup.
I'm going to the.
That's true. That's all I have, Greg.
Okay, thank you. Janet, would you like to say a few words?
I'd like to thank the voters for electing me to this, and all of you for being so welcoming, and the village employees for being so wonderful and helping me learn a lot of information. Thank you.
It'll be a long process.
Yeah, I can tell.
It's always nice to first meet.
Not too much to report, Mayor. Time to the ID meeting this afternoon, probably the last one, because I'm working at this solution. And I want to congratulate Janet, Kevin, and yourself, and I too wanted to thank the voters for a great turnout, because it's, it's every, even if there's an opposition, every year it should be like that. That was awesome. That's all I have.
Thank you. So's your.
Also, welcome, Janet.
Thank you.
Echo what Kim said, we do have a very strong board, and I think we're moving in the right direction, and the vote definitely spoke that way. I know it meant a lot to me, as I'm sure to all the rest of you, that you do have your trust in us, and you have elected us to be your trustees, and you believed in our recommendation of keeping the village a village, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart for that, because we will continue to work our best to serve you and the village of Champlain for many, many years to come. Big thank you to Stewart's, we were chosen for a thousand dollar grant towards our playground fund. This is the money that everybody puts into the little boxes by the cash registers year round for the holiday match program. And they choose from area, what's the word I want? Charities as to where they feel the money should go, and we were chosen because we were looking to do a grant for health and wellness, as well as serving children in our community. Both are top two priorities, so we were awarded a one thousand dollar scholarship, so thank you, Stewart's, and everyone who supports Stewart's. They are a phenomenal local business that is always looking out for the best of their communities, and we thank you deeply for that. And that is all I have. I applied for another grant, this one I asked for twenty thousand. I'm going big, go home is my philosophy now, so hopefully that will come through, and regardless, we'll be moving forward. Also, a thank you to St. Mary's, who is donating their playground equipment to ours. So as the weather warms also, Mike will be heading up there to dig up the old and plan out where we'll be placing everything, as well as with the new equipment, we'll be able to purchase with our money that we've acquired.
As well as some of the old equipment.
And some of the equipment from Champlain Elementary as well, yeah, so we should have one mega fabulous playground by the time all is said and done, so it's pretty exciting.
Pretty good, thank you. Any discussion on the reports? Have a report from the Click Treasury, please.
Everyone has a copy of the March revenue expenditure report. And we also did a water and sewer bill. Our water total was fifty-four thousand, six eighty-seven seventeen. And sewer was eighty-eight thousand, five forty-six, thirty-three.
That's about average.
It's a little higher, so we have met our budget. So a little over on our budget. So we're about three, four thousand dollars over on water and about five on sewer.
Okay.
Yep, we're right on. Right on, just above track here, a little bit, just. Purchase requisitions, please.
We have waiting purchase requests. One is from Midstate for twelve. What's that? DOT safety cones, four DOT sign stand kits, two thirty-six inch DOT mesh sign, one laying road ahead, and two thirty-six inch DOT mesh signs to say flagman ahead. For a total of fourteen hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? Well, I would like to thank Mike for taking this under his wing and going out and looking up these things. It's been an irritant, especially when we had a water main break last month, and we had to go borrow cones from the New York State Department and signs. It's a bit of an irritant to have to go through that. So thank you, Michael.
Yeah, it's a little needed.
Yes, thank you.
Who is this second quote from, Mike?
He's here. Blue Book USA.
Blue Book?
I just printed them off.
Yeah, I just didn't know who it was.
Hey, any other discussion on this requisition? Roll call, please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee McFedgey.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye.
Technically, I don't think we have a motion for this, don't we?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, we did.
Before discussion.
We have a second purchase request from Midstate. Two square shovels, three round shovels, two stone rakes, one twenty-four inch floor sweep broom, one thirty-six inch floor sweep broom, one, and one post hole digger. For a total of two hundred and seventy-eight eighty-five.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Is this just adding to our equipment, or is this replacing things that have sort of.
Post hole digger, I've been, probably going to have one, and the shovels we have, the round point are left. They're worn out.
Well-needed equipment.
Yeah.
Got to have tools, get stuff done.
This is, has been our, in the past for us, we are purchasing these things ahead from this year's budget, rather than.
Do we have a good wheelbarrow for mixing all the cement for the sidewalk replacements?
We'll wear it out, we'll have to get another one, that's all.
Make sure it's in good shape.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee McFedgey.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye.
And our third request is from Rad Letter Truck and Equipment for two, or one ten inch, or ten foot carbide plow blade and one ten inch cover plow blade.
Motion to approve?
Or ten foot.
Make a motion to, make a motion to approve?
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this requisition?
This is for the, this is for new, for new truck, right?
He has three piece blade, trip blade.
This is a spear. Any other discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee McFedgey.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Motion to approve the warrant?
We have additional invoices for a total of twenty-eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighteen cents to be added.
Make a motion to accept the warrant with these additions of two thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighteen cents.
Second?
Discussion? The only one that I had marked here for comment was under the water fund. We have a water sample test sent to Endine for fifty dollars that is being billed to Kira, the management firm at the border. This was, they don't have an account, so we took the test out, we had a boil water order, water main break up there, so we, Mike was, Mike took care of that. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee McFedgey.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Report from the superintendent?
Yep. I know, last time I was asked about rebuilding the pump for Orange Pocket Drive. We did have an issue, the seal light was on, and it has went out, and has not given us any issues, we have not had to replace that pump. When we do replace it, we have a spare here. I did talk to Karen Electric, and he knew it, asking about the price of rebuilding. The best way for them to give us a quote is if we have an old one, bring it down, deal it, tear it apart for nothing, see what it means, and then give us a quote on it versus buying a new one. I do have the price of a new one, and it's gone since last time, but I figure when it comes that time, we'll, we'll see what, which way we need to go. But as of right now, the pump, the seal light has went off, so we don't have a problem. The guy's been keeping an eye on it. We did have some water leaks, or water, yeah, water leaks. I know one was on the Ridge Road, and it hasn't been taken care of. We had a broken water main that, during the last meeting, we were chasing. We did repair it, it was in front of the laundry building, the water never showed, it was going down through some flip sized boulders underneath, and it was going down to the river. We did repair it, and that's taken care of.
Mike, do we have an estimate on the amount of water lost, or just a guess?
An estimate, probably a million and a half gallons. Well, we were, it started to get worse, originally around a hundred thousand a day, and it started to creep three hundred thousand a day until we found it, but it never showed, so it was a tough, it was tough to find. Once we did find it, I guess within a few hours, we had to wait for dig save, which didn't come till night, almost night time, so we had to wait till next morning. We did pinch it down to save water, but we're going to dig till next morning. So the meter readings are done for the month. We installed three new water meters and touchpads. One at Ninety-three Elm Street, one at Forty-one Moore Street, and one at One Oh Four Church Street. Also, on Thirteen Moore Street, we had one there that had, touchpad and wire was, had been disconnected, and we took care of that. Serviced all our springtime cleanup equipment, the mowers, the trimmers, the big mowing deck, we did all the service on that. We repaired a few potholes, I know we had some on Elm Street, one by the bridge, one on Church Street, we still have a. We repaired a few potholes. I know we had some on Elm Street, one by the bridge, one on Church Street. We still have a few more that as the frost comes out here, we're going to have to take care of. We just want to see how much we can go down before we fill them up. Jim and I, the NCCS came and got ahold of me. They had a boiler leak, an interprese, we lost a bunch of interpreses into the, down through the drains. But it is not hazardous. It's a cryo tech interprese, which is not hazardous and it didn't seem to have any effect as far as our wastewater plant here. So everything looks good as far as that goes. Then there was a water line break up on the East Service Road, which actually happened on a border property. They had it taken care of. We worked with them, as Greg said. I did contact the board of health and let them know because we had to shut off the water that went to, they can't get on there, shut off. We had to shut the next one up and we had to shut down the duty free. So because we had to drop the pressure on duty free, I did give them advisory and then we did send samples that came back and we took care of that advisory. It's not on anymore and Kira is, they've already been submitted. They've located those are tested because they're not a supplier. It has to come through us. Streetlights, you probably noticed the streetlights are, should all be working now. I did put my requests in. They emailed me back and the guy was here working on all the streetlights, so if anybody knows of any, you've got an issue with one, let me know and we'll have it taken care of. Fire hydrants. Last week, we went around to every hydrant, oiled the shafts, took all the caps off. I had the guys wire brush them and put food grade grease this way here. If there is time of, you know, emergency, that there's no issues with caps not coming off or this kind of thing. There was a few that we had to take off and change parts on. So I still have a couple that we got to swap out, or I shouldn't say swap out, remove. There's one on Cherry Street and there's one on Metal Lane that's not usable. One of them's cracked and there's a couple close together. We're going to put blockout plates on them and just not use them. I also have one to install a riser up on Metal Lane that's, the caps are like six inches from the ground. It's not really usable and it's snowed over the top. So we do have one there. We have a riser to do. We're just waiting. They tried to dig it the other day. It was real quick with the frost. We don't want to tear the lawn all up. We're going to hand dig it. And also the, all our tops for our curb water shut offs, you'll see probably as you drive around, we've been taking them out, swapping them, painting them for identification, painting them blue. Yeah, I've noticed that. So we've been swapping. We've got like fifteen every day. They swap them out, come back, wire brush them, paint them, let them dry the following day. When they go out, those are swap them out until we get them all swapped out. We have a new demo saw here. The old one had burnt up and they had bought it whenever. We went to use it for this, we had the water main break over in front of the laundry building and our cart would not work, demo saw cart, with a water cut. So I figured I priced out a cart for it. Cart is over six hundred dollars. So I decided to take a different option. We fabricated adapter plates here and we were able to make our old one work, made adapter plates, so we were able to use it. So we didn't have to spend six hundred dollars on that. Nice. The other thing is brush pickup. As of right now, I think brush pickups, we're going to do it on a Monday, Tuesday, probably the sixth and seventh of May. And then probably again on the thirteenth and fourteenth of May, just in case anybody misses it on the first round. They can catch it on the second round. And as a reminder, brush that is three inches or less in diameter, five feet long or less will be picked up and one truckload per property. Make sure you have that curbside by seven o'clock in the morning on each scheduled day. And then pickup truckload or?
We have a bigger truck now.
Well, we do, but that's what is allowed per property, pickup truckload, yeah.
For all four days, not one per day, one pickup?
One pickup per property for the total, for the springtime pickup, correct. Good answer. Also, as of right now, it looks like, I know this coming Wednesday, the DOT's going to be doing their streets here in Village, they got ahold of me. We're probably going to be sweeping, I figure probably around somewhere between probably April twenty-second and twenty-sixth in that week, depending how everything goes. That's what, as of now, we're thinking. And then probably the following week, April twenty-ninth through the beginning of May, Monday through Friday, sometime near, we'll be flushing hydrants. And I guess that's all I have right now.
You want to, if you would, just as a cost-saving measure, you're like, as well as a safety measure, describe what you're going back there today.
Oh, we've got a trench box here that was, it was here when I started. I don't know when. It was about aluminum trench box for when we dig. That, I don't know if it was ever really put to use. It wasn't really designed for what, what they needed for water mains because the braces are right on bottom. You can't send them over water line. It's set on the line. So there was some issues with it. There was some fluid left in the tank and the lines were all plugged. They originally had hydraulic cylinders. You push it apart to connect and it really couldn't be used. Instead of investing a lot of money, all we did is we took the cylinders off, we moved the braces out and we hidden them permanently so we can set it and take it out. So we are in trenches that are over four feet. Instead of having to shove way back, then we can use the trench box for safety. It's going to need for a while. Yeah. For it to use it. I think they never used it because the braces were right on bottom and it was not practical for what, so all we did is move the braces up a little bit so now they can set it over the line and be able to use it. That makes sense. It will be a pain, but that's the way that it is. You just have to use it.
Well, it'll save a lot of digging.
Yes. You won't have to shove back as far, especially if you're near the edge of a road. Instead of having to tear halfway across the road, if you can keep it close, that much of a hassle, you don't have to go back. So we will be putting that to use when we need it.
Hopefully not for a long time.
Yeah.
That's a bad indicator.
We will be going around too. There's going to be some curb stops and stuff that the frost has pushed up that will be, or that have been hit, that we'll be repairing and making a puller so we can raise and put extensions on and down and back down. Because I know some have been hit just because the frost pushed them up, whether it be homeowners plowing or whoever plowing. So we'll be taking care of those, any of that are sticking up as well, you know, as far as curving and... Or broke off? Or broke off. There's one from my house broke off. Yeah, we'll dig around them. We're going to make a puller here so we can pull them out, cut them off, put a couple of extension and bring them back down.
Any other questions for me?
Mike, as you're going around, like when you start the street sweeping and things, if you will start making a list of the streets that you think are going to need the most attention this year so we can start coordinating, or we, you can start coordinating with the county, Mr. Rascal?
Yeah, that's all I think. I know this year we're going to do Finley, going to widen, we do Finley and probably the Philly, but we have the turnaround. But we're going to use it as turnaround. And there are a few other spots that we'll have to, in front of these... I think, take a closer look at that whole street. It's bad. Whole street's getting bad.
Really bad.
Well, when they redid it, that street didn't get dug down. It just got laid on top of and I think that's why it's deteriorated so fast.
Well, that and I think we had to, I think we had to do a cut and...
We did a couple of cuts. It didn't help, but...
And that cut, it's bad.
The edges are breaking off.
Yeah, there's a few spots.
But it does slow the traffic down, so I'm kind of thrilled. My dog was killed on that street and I'm thrilled the traffic is slowing down.
But if you just sort of start a list, like what you think the main priorities are and we can...
Actually, I've got one started. I got a pretty good size to do list for, as we go on here, things to do.
And then we have to get one.
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
While we're here, another, in our budget process, we increase the amount that we will spend on sidewalks this year significantly. What Donna found out is that we can use our CHIPS money.
Oh, really?
Everywhere sidewalks. So, I mean, we have, we've got more money, at least according to New York State's budget, more money coming in for CHIPS funding, so.
Now, did I?
Approximately another five thousand dollars.
Another five? Okay. I was going to ask, I thought I had read more than that, but I wasn't.
I think it was like, what, sixty-five thousand, what's the, four million, something like that?
Okay.
So I'm sure it goes on budget now.
So we have fifty there now. Two years, fifty thousand now. We budgeted sixty thousand for streets, so.
We should be able to get some nice work done again this year.
Streets and sidewalks.
Sidewalks. Sidewalks. Sidewalks.
I mean, some of them too, they're not in shape, they're not like that.
Well, I'm sure you're talking about like Oak Street?
Yeah, there's some of them.
You can't, you...
Without killing the tree.
Well, kill the tree or completely ruin the sidewalk plow because those...
Yeah, there's some.
But one thing, they're only this wide and they're...
You going to build your sidewalks to meet the ADA requirements?
Well, we have to at this stage if we do any kind of replacement.
Five foot.
I think there's some spots that that's going to be almost impossible with trees.
I don't know if you'd want it there, you're going to kill it. Go on.
Do you have to?
Huh?
Do you have to build them that way?
I think if you get federal money, you have to. If not, I don't think you do.
Those sidewalks on Oak Street, I don't think have been touched since I was a kid.
Well, they are. They're just getting dangerous. We have forty-five hundred now to use before the end of the year. That's why I keep saying sidewalk, sidewalk, because always gets to be the low priority. And I know I was walking my granddaughter coming home from the library and I hit it with the stroller and thank God I had her belted in because she went flying up in the air. Just, you hit them right and kids on their bikes, that's what's terrifying. You know, they go flying off their handlebars and you could have a permanent lifetime disability.
Well, let's talk to yours about it.
It's not worth it. Right.
There's one by the, sort of, the hub rows too on Prospect. This place is going to, just one short strip there.
You got two or three panels down in...
Our laundry, one we tore out. We didn't put all that back near Hill Street.
Thanks, Mike.
All right.
Impressive start, Mike. Impressive start. Thank you.
Yeah, very good job. Very good job.
Do the correspondence, please.
Letter to honorable life occurrence with resolution in support of New York State contact information for vacant structures. Correspondence from McConnell and Arnowitz regarding rainy four years properties. Correspondence from Kendell Fringe regarding his residence at Twenty-Ninety Cedar Street. Correspondence and donation from stores regarding their holiday match grant. Correspondence from McConnell, Arnowitz regarding rainy four years properties.
Any questions on the correspondence? Discussion? I don't know whether this fits under old business or new business. I know we talked about replacing the diaphragms down at the wastewater treatment plant. I believe Mike copied all of you.
Yes.
Let's handle this under old business, I guess, today. Copied all of you with the newest quotes. Our first quote a while ago was six dollars a piece. You'll notice that the quotes that Mike received was significantly less than that. SSI Irration Incorporated, those were the lowest bidders. And you see that to replace the ones that we have now would be three seventy-five a piece, not six dollars for eleven hundred and seventy pieces. Total cost, four thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents.
What's the difference between that one and the PTFE?
Those are Teflon coated membrane, which are, they don't foul as easy and they, the material doesn't stick to them as far as solids, doesn't stick to them. And I did call today, actually two, I've got a paper here with a whole bunch of places I put them in. One of them was in Carthage, Village of Carthage. I talked to those people. And I talked to another one, Kira Bioscience, that have installed them. And they will not go back to the regular, we had EPDM originally and they put the Teflon coated, if they're EPDM or they're Teflon coated, there's less, they don't stretch as much either over time. And they said, now that they've switched to the Teflon coated, they will not go back to the others. Even the Teflon coated from this company is less money than the EPDM were originally. And the life expectancy, the EPDM, they say seven to ten year, they got a one-year warranty. The Teflon coated, they're a fifteen year with a five-year warranty.
Fifteen year...
Life expectancy.
Life expectancy with a five-year warranty.
Five-year warranty, fifteen year expectancy. And those that are down there now, have been there since?
Since it was built in, I don't remember.
Ninety-six?
Yeah, ninety's, I think that's, it was Stanford, I think it's...
Well, they've been there, they've outlasted their...
But we don't know how long, we don't know, we just noticed it. It's a fine bubble diffuser. What it does is puts multiple bubbles and it helps, puts more oxygen to the water for the bacteria to be more effective. Some of those down there, you'll see them, they have big bubbles, yeah. And I don't know how long they've been, somebody that's there every day might not notice that they're getting worse a little over time, where somebody come in and see it, whoa, there's an issue. So I don't know. They might have been slowly going over time and not noticed, you know, not noticing them. But by changing means, the efficiency should be drastically better because instead of having that, you know, the oxygen, instead of being big bubbles, it's divided into so much smaller bubbles. It's that much more oxygen in water to effectively break down quicker.
And you don't think it'll be any harder on the motors?
No, the people I talked to, they, the ones that have installed them, said that they did not see any, they don't have an amp meter, amp draw meter on their, you know, to see the amperage difference. We didn't know it would be harder being the Teflon coated. They couldn't stretch as much for the harder the air goes through, but they said they had not seen any increase as far as, you know, electricity or... Their pumps, they changed every five or six or however many years they have had any, you know, no, as far as breakdowns or any premature wear, anything like that on their blowers. So they have not noticed any, as far as any issues with the Teflon ones. They said now that they had them, they won't go back to the others just because they do last that much longer. And they stay, they stay, they don't... Right, they don't foul.
So the original point of this, the recommendation of this was for energy efficiency. Are we going to still see some energy efficiency by going to the Teflon?
Look, well, the biggest thing will be longevity. They'll last longer then. They're an EPDM rather than a Teflon coating. As far as, as far as, energy, right, dispersion is the same, energy should be the same, but the longevity should have to change as often. Because it is quite a job to change. You've got to pump that whole tank down and clean it out. It's not something that you want to do every, very often. You do what you're going to do.
Community services.
Busy in, busy in August, Nick?
I think we will see some...
A great deterrent for those of you questioning whether you're going to break the law or not. We will have you cleaning up.
I think we will see some... Put you on the spot, Michael. What's your recommendation?
My recommendation is the Teflon coated. If you change them, you have to change them all. You can't mix and match just because they're different material. It could go through easier through one than the other, so they recommend if you do change. We can plan on doing all anyway. Yes, and this is enough to do, the tanks and the digesters, this is enough to do all of them. The only other thing that I did put on here that, talking to the people that had changed them before, is there is a, it's down at Horni Mesa, special silicone that they bought a case of or whatever, because you've got to spray the rubbers when you put them in and when you tighten the flange, it doesn't roll them up, so they seat properly. Which is, it's like a silicone, it's price wise, I don't know. It doesn't matter, no matter what, should we change it with, we still have to use it.
You still have to buy it.
Right.
And there's no shipping on this? This is all?
No, that will be at Champlain, so that's here, right here.
Okay. I make a motion that we purchase the Teflon coated aerators for a total of six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents from SSI.
Second?
Any discussion? Once we purchase these, we'll come back with the cost of the lubricant after.
We might don't. You get ahold of me too, along with what they recommend, so it doesn't break down. One of the quotes has the... Yeah, but that's a pale. It's kind of like, talk to you said, don't go that way. You're better to buy the aerosol. You spray it and you, all you do, one quick coating and you put the rings on.
Mike, are you going to purchase it from the same company? Mike, are you able to purchase it from the same company?
No, I might be able to. I didn't, I didn't find out about that until after I talked to them, so I will make sure.
You just tell them we'll go with them if they'll throw in the spray.
Yeah, we'll see what we can do.
Yeah, hey, hey, work sometimes, you have to ask.
We'll see what we can, see what we can do. And they did have them in stock, you know, they said subjectively, they'll deliver some of yours them this week before we do. Then he went, but they haven't, they haven't stopped. In a lot of places, the other places were eight to 12 weeks. And reason being, a lot of times they wipe them somebody else, they mark them up 50% and they're just the middleman. And that's what happens.
Any other discussion? Number one call, please.
Justice Chombley.
Aye.
Justice McFetrich.
Aye.
Justice Chombley.
Aye.
Justice Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Okay, it's been requested by Green Year and Carr that the town and the villages of Champlain come up with a stipend, a $1,000 stipend. So they continue their shared services study with the looking for funding. Our share in this would be $2,500. I received an email from Matt Cooper, the project engineer. There are some things that needed to get started here rather quickly. One of which is a aerial survey, which is necessary to do the design. The aerial survey is projected to cost $17,800. The town will be looking at the, at the cost of this. I assume the town will have to go out and borrow money for this.
I'm not sure what they're going to do, supervisor. I just got it this afternoon. I tried to call Matt, but he wasn't in the office.
Okay.
He's, he sounds like he's very positive, we're gonna get some granting here. I just sort of wanna know how positive is he? Because he's assuming, I mean, we would be reimbursed through the grant for that $17,000, so.
Well, the word could here plays a big role. Could be funded.
Yeah.
We don't have any aerial photos from.
No, gotta be recent stuff.
Yeah, it looks like he's looking for recent for the lead.
Yeah, it's gotta be done with the lead show up. And the town has already approved this $2,500 stipend?
Yes.
Yes.
Will the $17,000 be split between the town and village?
At this point, the town is the lead agency, they will be responsible.
Okay.
Until funding is resolved.
And will we be splitting the $2,500 out of, between water, God bless you?
Shared services. That we have already funded for this year. Any motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a second? Any other discussion on this?
Is this for the $2,500?
Yes, $2,500. Shared services account.
Clarifying.
Which is, matches to, we do the study with just the family and.
Correct. Find us another point.
Well, we look at it, refigure it, reconfigure it, modify the previous project schedule, show the estimated cost with just the village and the town being the, being their participants in this.
He indicated in his email, he was gonna break it down per item, like the secret process and so on and so forth, which I kinda thought was interesting.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think the last time we talked to him, we started with $54,000. Their cost was at $90,000. So I know it's a nifty, I know it's a subjective thing.
Do we wanna add this $2,500 onto the warrant? Well, because he needs it right away, really. Just confirmation.
When is, do you have any idea when the town is going to?
Well.
I know it's been approved.
Yeah, it was approved, their meeting is the third week this month, so I would imagine. I can't understand why it wouldn't have been sent out by now if they approved it last month.
But we discussed that. Combine the two.
Right, I think that's what we're waiting for, is to combine it together and send it out.
So next meeting, is it gonna be for another five weeks?
Yeah. So you wanna amend your motion to?
You could always just give approval if we do get it, that, well, you didn't even write a check to them, but you don't have to add it on the warrant.
Is that all right?
Let's do that.
Sounds good.
Okay, number one call, please.
You wanna make a motion to?
That's what we do.
We have to tell them and Janet, for the $2,500.
The $2,500.
Okay. Yeah, but to give me permission to make a check. Would you make your motions due to this one, the?
Let's do this, I'm gonna go second.
Okay. Justice Chombley.
Aye.
Justice McFetrich.
Aye.
Justice Chombley.
Aye.
Justice Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye.
Okay, now I'll make a motion that you're able to pay this immediately, give the town, village a check for it.
Second.
Any discussion?
Justice Chombley.
Aye.
Justice McFetrich.
Aye.
Justice Chombley.
Aye.
Justice Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
I'm in conversation with Mr. Castain and some reenactors. I'd like a motion from the board to approve the use of the River Street Park over the Memorial Day weekend as a place for the reenactors to set up their tents, set up their displays in conjunction with St. Mary's Bazaar that weekend. They will come and stay for a couple nights, set their tents up, bring their antique weapons, shoots and cannons, muskets. And it is supposed to be every major war era represented. So I think a motion from the board just to show that we support this would be appropriate here.
So moved. Second.
Any other discussion here? It's the Friday, Saturday and Sunday. They said that they would be out of there by Sunday at five o'clock, so Friday night for like, and they seem to be quite committed to this. And I think it'll be good, it'll be a good draft with it.
Do we need to make sure we have latrines down there for them?
I think we can, much the same as we do with the Village Fest and things, work something with the suppliers to bring them down.
Be more similar.
In exchange for. Okay, all those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We've been looking at this next one for a bid here. We have a bid from KG, well, I'd like the motion to clean the carpets and, clean the carpets, clean the tables and clean this chairs in this room, in this office. They are greatly in need of such care. If I can use that term. Without, ladies, without, found a bid here from KG Cleaning Plus, Shazie, New York. And the estimate is, and if you desire, we can get another one, I don't know if we have to or not. Clean carpet in all carpeted areas, clean all beverage chairs for the total sum of $210.
I find that I think that's a very reasonable price.
Seems reasonable to me.
It is.
You have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
And we have a second discussion on this? Are we well within the confines here with $210? Number one call, please.
Justice Chombley.
Aye.
Justice McFetrich.
Aye.
Justice Chombley.
Aye.
Justice Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. That's all the new business I have. Anything else to come before the board?
May I ask one question?
Sure.
Okay. I noticed that there's the New, Northern New York Water Works Conference, Spring 2013.
Possibly.
Yes. Is anyone attending that?
Possibly.
Okay.
I've not heard the second story yet.
It is, let's see.
Maybe something.
They first, please reply with payment by April 24th, 2013.
And it's the water, that's for credit hours for water to operators?
Yeah, six credit hours. And since we won't be meeting again until, we won't be meeting again until.
After that.
And I don't.
There's another one in the end of May, Lake Placid with the blue water.
That's the one that, not this one, that's the one that somebody guys, I said, we'll see as it gets closer.
Yeah, you get credits there also.
Right.
Which is closer than Potsdam, it's just.
That's, that's, one in Lake Placid is the one that, that's like a five day, but it wouldn't be, it would be a one day, depending what classes or where. But I told them, we'll see as it gets a little closer.
They have golf lessons on Monday.
There you go. Oh, so that's, oh, he doesn't play golf, we can send him to that one.
Well, there's Seattle on that group festival.
Well, I didn't know, because we're not gonna be meeting again until after this.
Not to Potsdam, but the Lake Placid one, I know Woody had mentioned it was a couple of classes and we'll see as it gets a little closer here and then go from there.
I just didn't wanna see that get missed if anyone was playing.
That was all. Make a motion to adjourn?
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, thank you.
That's one you never.
I didn't have the, um, assignment, no, I didn't, you didn't have a 2013 budget for that.
Well.
Okay, now, is I supposed to have?